Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October thirty first, and happy Halloween to everyone. Be careful and safe and.
Watch out for trick or treaters.
The treaters are running everywhere this evening, so be careful of two thousand and twenty-three. So, uh, first on our agenda is the Teamsters Local one twenty, and I understand that they have responded and said they will not be presenting this morning. So, Mr. Todd Keeney is on our county engineer. Good morning.
Morning. So, the road department got a request to vacate a section of undeveloped, unused, uh, roadway easement.
Can you pull that up?
Right there in your map.
So who meant this being?
All right, what do you have, Todd?
It's one of the name, but.
Oh, it's Shanahan. I believe. Property owner to the north. Uh, so. Resolution sets hearing would, uh, pick the date of Tuesday, November fourteenth at nine AM. And technically, we wouldn't need to have a hearing, but I feel like it's a good thing to do. Um, since this isn't limiting access or closing an, uh, section of road that's actually open to public travel. Technically, you don't need to have a hearing, but it, it's good to have a hearing anyway, but, uh. So all we're doing is, when do you want to have the hearing to discuss?
So is this partial? Okay.
Would you minutes set the proper hearing for, can we do it next week?
Uh.
Fourteen, fourteen. Four and twenty days, and then I have to send out notice to all the joining landowners, utilities, the board of supervisors, and if the state's affected by certified mail.
Have to get you the paper by this Friday.
Yeah.
To have it on the seventh, you mean?
No.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, yeah.
Motion to have it on public hearing on November fourteenth.
At nine AM?
At nine AM.
Resolution is set here.
It is a resolution, it's resolution number nine ninety-six dash ten dash thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three.
And I have a motion and a second to approve that resolution to set the public hearing. As request. Nine AM, November fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion clear.
That was easy. Uh.
Hey, do you want us to be there?
No, no. All right, that's really all I had, so.
How are we doing with the day labor work and preparing for, depending on weather season changes and all that stuff, or?
So the day labor work, um, they're gonna finish their third bridge. And they've started the next one, are gonna be starting the next one, so he planned on trying to do two a month. Um, he still got. At least two to get done, so we'll see.
So we're finished.
We did the one just. Uh, north side of, uh, what is that?
Sixty.
Sixty-four.
Yeah.
And then we're doing the one, just, just finishing up the one just east of Preston. And I gotta talk to Dan and see where he's gonna go next, but. His intent was to get them all done this fall, so.
And then the one up here is finished, of course, by.
Yeah.
What makes who, who, what, when, whatever makes a call of if it's a culvert or a bridge? Because like, that crack that we're doing these bridges on? Like going under sixty-four is a culvert. But right out, you just come off of sixty-four and we got a bridge. What makes the call or what?
So it's the, when we do the hydraulics, we'll, uh, do a valley section. Usually it's about two to five hundred feet upstream of where the structure is gonna be, whether it's gonna be a culvert or a bridge. So we'll run the hydraulics using the Iowa Bridge Backwater Hydraulics. And see what size bridge we need based on the head water, backwater requirement, so we check the Q fifty, so the fifty-year storm and the Q one hundred. So at the Q fifty, it has to have a backwater of point seven-five feet or less. At the Q hundred, it's gotta be one point five feet of backwater or less, so that's our design. Uh, parameters, if you will. So if we get to be where the bridge is like twenty feet or less, then like to meet, so that we keep, it's just iterative, so like you keep running a different bridge. How do I say that? So you, you, you put this valley section in, and then you put the road section in, and then what you're doing is seeing how much head loss. The road fill section creates un- under the natural section, so you're constricting the flow, and the conservation of flow, you have to have the same amount of flow in that area, so what you do is you have to increase the velocity through there, so by increasing the velocity, you create, you create more backwater. So you need more head pressure to push the water through, so what you're doing is you're equating that, and then you keep changing the bridge opening size until you get, you meet that point seven-five or one point five. So if the bridge is like twenty feet or less, then we'd look at a culvert. Now, culverts are a little bit different because you're allowing more backwater, so a culvert is designed, usually you have a, your, your, you allow a headwater over D, that ratio is usually around one point two to one point three, so that's your parameter for those. So, i- if you look at a culvert and you say you can, you get by a twin ten by tens. Well, then we just do a cost estimate, and we've done this, was it last year, for one of those, a cast-in-place twin-by-twin box culvert is more than a bridge. Because you think about. A bridge is twenty-seven foot wide. When you build a culvert, how wide is, long is that culvert in the road? It's fifty, sixty feet long because you have to fill over the entire thing, where a bridge is only twenty-seven foot wide. So when people think about a culvert being less expensive, i- it really, for the most part, it isn't, because you have to make that culvert structure twice as long as the bridge. When I say long, it's really the width of the road.
Yeah. And like a lion. Yeah.
Uh, well. They'll outlive all of us sitting in this room, both of them.
I mean, beans or concrete decks now, I mean, lifespan.
Wow, a culvert is, uh, you know, probably has a similar lifespan, sixty, eighty years. Bridge is probably around sixty.
Okay. We did put a double box east of Saint Donatus that time on High Bridge.
Well, you know, people don't realize, like, those box culverts, they got a, a foot thick, fourteen inches ceiling, the bottom's fifteen inches thick, the walls are eight tentages, they, there's more concrete in a box culvert than there is in our bridge.
And then you have more. I guess what you'd call. More, more things to catch if, if huge or larger materials going through there, I mean, you'd have more of a backup material, I would say.
So, for me, like, what I've kind of experienced is if we can get by with precast sections, we would do a box culvert. Like, I mean, if I can get a twelve-by-eight box and that meets the hydraulics, we, you know, we would do that, but anytime you're getting into a double precast, like a ten-by-ten precast twin or twelve-by-twelve twin, you know, those things are, number one, you need a huge crane to set those, and number two, they're, they get to be fairly expensive, and if you're having a contractor come in and do a cast-in-place box, that's more formwork, more cost, more closure than a bridge is.
I understand people ask.
Yep. Now we don't know. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else we need to know?
No.
Teeth is up and at him again.
What's that?
Seventeen is good.
I, I went and drive out there, I've been out there since we did, uh, the finish work on it. We did stop doing retrieval work for the year or two, so we were gonna try and get that other. Um, road done, that little road back to the south, but I think they were just gonna, uh, kind of peel the shoulder that we have dissed up down the slope a little bit, so it's ready for winter and then be done, so. It's getting pretty late to be hauling rock, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna blow it off for a couple of months, you know, so. Okay.
So come back at ten thirty, eleven?
You, uh, let me know about that sign if you would, or.
Yeah.
If you want me to take a picture of it, send it to you, I can do that.
No, it's just a, it's the Hertzville Interpretive Center sign, basically you wanna put a.
On the old west of sixty-four and sixty-one.
No, Summit, Summit Street and sixty.
Summit Street and sixty-one. There's no exit there, but that's where it's at, the night overpass.
I think that's a brown on white.
Hey, if I talk to you about that cross-section, you talk to your dad.
That means you have invested interest? Okay, then. We are, um, down to our visitors and any citizens that might want to address the board this morning. And, uh, hearing or seeing none, we will move on to Lori Rowling, who's not here. Um, Lisa?
This morning, I approved the minutes of the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers. Remove.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes for the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three board proceedings, as written, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Right.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve a handwritten warrant, uh, for invertis training solution for seventy-seven thousand, one hundred dollars for a lost check which has been voided and needs to be reissued. Remove.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the handwritten warrant to the virus training as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve the chair signature on the amended solar contract to Blue Sky Solar. Okay.
Motion second to approve the chair's signature on amended solar contract to Blue Sky Solar at the facility down here, the new jail facility, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today, thank you.
Very nice. Um, Luanne, are you available?
Yep.
Are you guys here? Good morning.
Good morning. All right, calendar for this week. Um, what we have left for today of the retreat is at eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock, we have the union negotiating strategy session uh, with human resources and the county engineer. That is a closed session. Tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, November first, at nine AM, is the RTA meeting in Dubuque, or by Zoom for all of you. At four PM is a Wednesday's, our possible meeting in Preston, for any of you that want to go to that. At six o'clock tomorrow night is a nine-one-one service board meeting for Mike and then. Thursday, November second.
I'm gonna take this place from this.
Oh, okay, we had, you asked me the question, I didn't know who you'd got, so.
I have. A member.
Okay. And then. Okay, Wednesday, November second, from one to three is the D and R work session in Green Island, for any of you that want to go to that. Um, on Sunday, November fifth, two AM is when we fall back on the clocks, so.
They change that.
They change it every year, I always have to look it up and.
No, I thought they were gonna do away with it, last year was in legislation, but they never.
It didn't pass then. So it's still on the agenda. Monday, November sixth, at nine AM, I tentatively have a destination Iowa update. Um, I haven't received any confirmation of that from Nathan yet, so I was still working on that. Tues- our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November seventh, at nine AM, that will be an election day, so I will keep the meeting that day as short as possible. Because Lisa will be a little busy that day, I hope to be.
Okay, uh. Yesterday, you sent out a bunch of emails about canceling an RPA, whatever meeting for the twenty-eighth of December and, and is it, are we on for them, that, this, is it seven, November seventh? Or when, or when was that, or December seventh, fifth, or December sixth?
Yeah, I think the RPA DMAs, when the annual one that they do with Stu Anderson from the state. They had rescheduled it once, and now they've rescheduled again, the new date is December the fifth at eleven AM.
Okay.
Which is going to mean that our meeting here can be about five minutes long before we have to leave and head to Dubuque, so we will have to, next week, um, I have it on the agenda to decide what we are going to do, if we're going to change that. It also means we aren't gonna have any budget sessions unless we do it after that meeting, but that meeting is supposed to run till one o'clock. So whether we wanna do it on a different day, whether we wanna just start an hour early or a half hour early, so I can get you out of here, I can keep it as short as possible, but they, that's where they put it, and I can't really move that.
I mean, we have till ten, maybe, uh, we can get there easily in an hour or more than that.
Okay, so I can keep it really short, if you wanna keep it in the same place, but there won't be any budget.
We can certainly start at eight-thirty, we can discuss that, and if we have to start a half hour early, we'll just post it.
Right, I put it on the agenda for next.
As far as budget, is anybody even signed up, or?
So we are receiving the budgets, um, tomorrow is the day for budgets to be into the auditor's office, we have received quite a few. And, um, I did visit yesterday with Luanne, and we're trying to kind of work out a schedule, um, based on last year, who came in, and as far as who gets how much time. So we don't have people sitting out in the hallway, and then they, then, then they leave, so we're kind of working on that right now, we're trying to work with your schedule and, and, uh, so we don't have it.
Well, let's see how that plays out, you know, we've got till December fifth, I mean, we have the whole month of November to, how soon before we can change our time? I mean, we can still do that on the twenty-first, let's change our time, right?
Change your time.
To publish it.
Move it forward to like eight-thirty or whatever.
Yeah.
Oh, the, the December fifth meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, twenty-four hours notice is what I have to get, so I thought the media, media usually likes to have a month's notice, so I tried to put it on next week's agenda for the seventh, and we can decide next week, or we can put it off another week if we need to, but.
I guess we can look at our calendars too and see if we have time or days that we can come in for a budget work sessions.
Right, that's gonna be true.
What's that, Redwood, we could come in on the twenty-third, all that.
Ben Davison tried to schedule a seven-thirty AM, um, Zoom meeting on the morning after Thanksgiving, and I emailed him, I said, I think that's gonna create black thoughts, if not outright mutiny, I don't think you're gonna get anybody for that meeting, so.
Well, everybody gets up at four-thirty to go shopping. Not I.
All right.
Okay.
All right, the only other good business that I have, um, I think you've seen all this, is that, uh, Mike had signed a letter of support for Inspiration Stable application for the Strengthening Communities Grant, and both of you had seen that before he signed it, so we just need to take formal action to approve having him on that letter.
Second.
Motion second to approve the signature on the Interation Stables, uh, grant letter, of letter of support, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you. At this time, you're joined by Larry, or Lori, and Larry? Change your name quick, Lori, Lori Rowling, or Jackson County Zoning Administrator. Good morning.
Hi, guys, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good. So, um, first departmental update, um, when I was in here, was it last Tuesday or Tuesday before? Anyway, you guys wanted us to knock out the rest of Leisure Lake, while those notices are dated for tomorrow, they will be in the hands of the sheriff's office this afternoon, so they can start processing them to be served after tomorrow.
So you have a number?
Oh, gosh, um. Thirty-five, I mean, that ballpark. So we're, we're tapping. Um, that hundred mark, all of, or.
We had good response, so we'll just keep moving on it and see what our response is, I mean, we're getting into inclement weather and we'll see how that will go.
Well, they all knew about it before it got in climate too, so, um. And then the first court. The first one that went to court, it's been, it's been remedied, um, taken care of by the, um, county attorney's office, and it's, that one property is now satisfactory. Um, there is another one that pled not guilty going to court on November sixteenth. And, um, he's been in contact with our office about building a shed, so that all his toys can go inside there.
Good.
So we're, we're working on that.
Making progress.
Yes, we're making progress, and then later on, we can talk, not now, can't handle it, um, we've just got way too much going on, but we wanna get the rest of those court notices going in Leisure Lake on group one. We can talk how we wanna pursue with that later. So let's go down to the rescind resolution nine-nine-five-ten, ten-twenty-three, um, on the zoning fees. I'd sent you guys an email after I realized that, um, I had failed to add that all application fees double if the project was started before the application was applied for, or issued. That was not on nine-nine-five-ten-ten-ten-twenty-three. So my question for you is, do you want to rescind that and update it with the corrected? Do you guys want to see that application fee doubled if the project was started before it was applied for or issued?
Yeah.
And do you have a new resolution number?
I do, so, um, the best way for us to handle that is to have a motion to approve rescinding resolution nine-nine-five dash ten dash ten dash twenty twenty-three. And approving resolution nine-nine-seven dash ten dash thirty-one dash twenty twenty-three. Um, what that does is it takes away the nine-ninety-five and it brings everything back in under nine-nine-seven, it's a very clean way to do this.
Can we do that all in one motion, or do we have to?
I believe so.
We'll do it all in one motion.
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to rescind resolution nine-nine-five dash one zero dash one zero dash twenty twenty-three. And approve resolution nine-nine-five dash ten, nine-nine-seven, dash ten, dash thirty-one, dash twenty twenty-three, as presented.
When it is January first is when this takes effect?
December.
December first, okay.
Yeah.
Providing the fees and permit schedules, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
I oppose. Motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, um. I'd let you guys know, we get a lot of complaints out of Leisure Lake, or excuse me, I picked, let's take that back, Green Island. But it seems like they're not directed towards all the violators that are out there.
So you have written complaints, or you have just phone calls?
Oh, I have, um, I have both.
Okay.
I have a, um, and actually I'd re, I need to resubmit a notice to the, the one family, it's gonna happen either this week or next.
Okay.
Um. But I just wanted to know if you guys would allow me to do a blanket letter, just saying, hey, we have these type of violations in Leisure, or in Green Island, excuse me, I Leisure Lake on the brain, um, we have these type of violations in Green Island. And just a nice way of just saying, hey. We'd like to see you clean this up before we start doing any official, anything official as a county, but, um, there's.
So does our policy and procedure entail a courtesy letter?
No. It does not.
For Leisure Lake, if, right?
We did afford them a courtesy letter.
Okay.
It's not something that we're required to do. I wanted to ask if we could, um, really timewise, we don't have time to start with, uh, Green Island and do like we were doing in Green, um, in Leisure Lake with a blanket enforcement, we don't have the time. Um, we're stretched pretty, pretty thin right now, just with the big projects that we have going on. Um, with the comp plan, wind energy conversion, um, rewrite, and I'll work on the budget today.
We know it's due tomorrow, right?
For me?
We know it's due tomorrow, right?
Yes, mine isn't as bad as, as some, I'm sure, so.
Well, I guess I would kind of be okay with that, but is now the good time to send out the letter, or would it be better to send it out mid to end of winter?
Actually, if it don't, if we don't get snow, I think it's a good time, because things are actually hardened up, and you could drive into some of them soft response if it will in the lower.
Snow right now.
Yeah.
Just bring on continuity.
Right.
And, and I understand workloads and all that stuff, and you talked about possibly winding down to Leisure Lake until the spring, as far as enforcement, all that. If we sent, I remember, right when we first came in, we were talking courtesy letters, then we started jumping about April. I'm all cool with that, I don't want one group to argue that another group is getting leniency just because of whatever. So you can send out a blanket letter, but there needs to be, you know, if they ignore it, they don't do anything, the clock needs to start.
The date when we're gonna start the official notices is then, what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Yeah, that makes sense, if you send out a courtesy letter, that, that, you know, we're gonna have a policy to say when.
We have a policy, we have complaints.
We have complaints on specific properties, however, there's other properties out there that are just as bad, if not worse, but they're not getting complained on. So, um, so, yeah.
It's, it's one of those things, when somebody turns the spotlight on an area, sometimes the light doesn't just shine on where they want it. Sometimes it casts the bigger.
And.
And so when you bring the eye to your community, it brings it to the whole community, not just, we can only look at, you know what I mean?
Thank you, that was well said, yes.
Since we've had a couple of incidents where that happened, it is what it is, and, uh, you know, I just think it needs to be, we've gotta be continuity, and as to be fair.
Okay, so. That was not on your agenda, so I think that's in the realm of your office's business, correct, that you can proceed with?
Yeah, I guess, but it was not quite the way. It wasn't quite ready to go full force yet, um, might give it, um, I know the ones that we did in, um, Leisure Lake, we had until we gave them like three months, January to April, if I remember right, so if we did that with this group.
I mean, if you're going from December one to November.
We'd probably take it to March.
I mean, you're gonna get letters out within the next two weeks, I imagine, correct?
That would be the hope, I mean, I could, um. I could hold off if I needed to a little bit, and I, okay, and my goal is to focus on the heart of Green Island and not the fringe, okay? All right, so, and then also with, with, um, departmental update, you guys, um, we had a nuisance complaint yesterday. Um, he was official, he signed it, um, new building going up with, um, glare, and he told me what time it was at its worst, with the sun, um, the reflection, and I agree with the guy that, yeah, there's he has not free use of his property during those, during that time period. Um, so I kind of had a little discussion with the county attorney too, and I'm gonna tread lightly on it, um, maybe they can work something out, but also this nuisance complaint with glare also triggered the fact that there was no zoning permit taken out for the bill. So, um, I've talked to the property owner, he knows that I have a, um, cease build ready to be delivered to him.
So I did have the opportunity to drive by there, and the, and the cease build, if he agrees to pay the permit fee like we've done before, he can continue. I mean, I would say get a contractor someplace and, uh, if he's got a crew there, he'd like to keep them, I would imagine, I don't know.
He's got a crew there, but we, it might take a week, depending on going through our chain, um, typically I let people know plan on a week to two weeks to get an approved permit, just filing the application is not a permit. They've made application, but the com- the permit's not done until it's actually done, um. You know, do we know that all the setbacks have been met? Um, is there any encroachment on a, on a septic field or septic tank? All that is part of what we review when, um, and Elizabeth reviews when, when a zoning permit's been applied for.
Sure.
So we wanna go through the process and, um, I did just follow up with our ordinance under the chapter two under administration. Um, two-point-one and two-point-four cover us for shutting down a site, cease, cease construction.
Okay, so. Again, if, if he is in the parameters and in the setbacks and in the, and the permit could be issued. Um. How do you enforce glare? How do you enforce glare?
It to me, what you, in that email, it sounded. Subjective. I, 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 you know. I, I, that, that's a question I have as well.
Does it matter where he's standing on his property or inside is? Also, or is it?
Summertime, it may not be a glare.
It, it'll be different with the angle of the sun, right now, it's, it's definitely there.
Can't control that.
No, but it's, um. I don't know, I've been told that there's some type of. Treatment that can be put on it to dull it. Um.
I mean, the color of the building itself is not. Reflective, I would say.
No, it's not, it's not the building itself, it's the roof and I was out there.
Roof is the same color as the building, yeah.
I'm not convinced. But it's, but even if it was, it's the roof that's the problem. Um, and I have, I was out there myself and, um. I didn't take a picture, I, what I did is I pulled in, looked, it was like, wow, and it was right at one o'clock when I was there. Um. Went, turned around, went out to highway sixty-one to see if I could see if there was any. Anything there that I could see from sixty-one that would be a problem to traffic. And it wasn't, went back and the glare wasn't as bad when I snapped the photo as it was.
Those are short periods.
Right.
They're two separate things.
They're two separate things.
So if he's not encroaching a, a. A sanitary field, if he's not got any setback issues. This won't hold up the issuing of the zoning permit.
The, the glare will not hold up, no, that will, that's, that's two separate issues. Yeah, um, however, it was the glare that got my attention to the illegal bill.
Right, but I'm just curious to see how you handle it, I mean.
Well, and I'm gonna. Be in touch with, with the county attorney's office.
Yeah.
And I already have been, um. Talked to Bracky yesterday, Keys today about it, um, Keys brought it up to me, cause he just. Yeah, and I was like, come for a ride with me at this time, but today is not gonna be the day.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah.
Well, there's mother nature, yes.
Yeah, does it, does it go through, does it go through a winter and you don't have the glare, it's just cause it's brand-new steel on the building?
Could be, yeah.
You know?
Cause we know green bins too, um.
No difference than following some semis that have that. Know what it is, they're silver backing though and it's like, you definitely back off from.
Yeah.
Following them because of that.
And it is, yeah. But this is his front yard, his enjoyment and the way the, um, the reflection, I'm sure it. You know, you talk about lots of windows, there's a lot of windows on the. Person who has the concerns housed.
Going forward, how, how do you, how do you assess that when somebody's building? I mean, so I, this gentleman, whoever goes and completely builds this. You know, he say he did go through all the proper channels.
Right, right, and, and still could there, yeah, it could be an issue. The one thing that we do have in our zoning ordinance, but it doesn't fall under. Like, would be something for you and I to worry about, but, um, if we wanted to do a home occupation or a home industry. There is part of in our ordinance that says renders no glare, no obnoxious smells, odors. And it does mention specifically glare. Um, in part, part of our ordinance, but. Only when applying to, um. Um. Home industry, home occupation, however, our ordinance does, excuse me. Reference, um, code section six fifty-seven, uh, that we do. Recognize that code section of the state of Iowa. And it's six fifty-seven point one that this would fall under.
Yeah, I think we'll have some sunny days coming up in the next, in.
We will.
We can go up there.
And then the, after next week, it would be new, far less before noon, that. That would be the, the time, with the time change, okay? But thank you guys, I appreciate you relooking at our ninety-five.
Hi, Thor.
Yeah.
Um, are there any board or commission report for anybody would like? Uh, I did, um, to the Duke and that was very informational, I should say. Um, there was a lot of conservation people there, we had a real good turnout from our conservation. And, uh. I mean, it's just progress as far as, as far as where they wanna go and what they wanna work on and apply for and. So it was, it was learning, it was educational, I should say.
Well, I know the water management authority had their annual meeting, I wasn't able to make it, had something come up, but, uh. They passed their budget, they talked about a few of their projects, everything went well, so we're, uh, chugging right along.
Okay, at this time, we will take a brief recess. We will reconvene at this time and, uh, we're joined by Mr. Jim Crocker, our Jackson County Chief Deputy Sheriff. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. Okay, uh, today I just wanted to talk about. How to go forward with servicing our cities, our incorporated cities. Uh, with law enforcement services, uh, and their required compensation. Uh, historically, when we began in twenty-twenty-one, there were two cities, Andrew and Lamont. That were paying deputies for law enforcement services. And my, uh, my understanding of how that was happening. Was some of it would happen during their shift. And some of it would happen on the side, but it was happening with. With county equipment. And without the proper agreements, and so in, in December of twenty-one. Uh, in January of twenty-one, we, we stopped those services, we, we disallowed the deputies from doing that. Unless they did it on their own as, as, uh, as employment through the incorporated cities. Um. In doing that, we also started what we call directed patrol, we, we, we give a lot of service to these cities. And, um. I know we don't have, uh, place settings now, uh, without prior to the middle, but I do have those numbers. In terms of what services they've been getting and, and it's, it's been, I think, very, very productive, very fair. Um, we're in, we're in these cities all the time, but we're doing it without compensation as they're required. To have through, through Iowa code. And, um, I think, I think there's services that could be better. Uh, had through agreement in terms of municipal ordinance enforcement, if we have those agreements, but. I think the fairness of it is, uh, these cities do have to provide for compensation as required by code.
I guess my, my question to that, Jim, is are these, uh, councils and mayors, are they aware that they're responsible for this in the code? Um, or, cause you know, I guess my thought is right now is budget season, so if they're gonna budget for this in twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you look at some of the numbers here, it probably would hit some of them cities substantially.
A- a- absolutely, and, um, and I'm aware that Andrew's aware of it by code. And, and I would, I would assume that Springbrook is by the fact they, they were participants in. In adherence to code, so the other ones may not. And I think it's really important how we go about this, for one thing, I, I, I did. Put numbers together that demonstrate the high end and, and the low end of this. I did use some of the historical numbers of Springbrook and Andrew to come up with. Uh, rates that I believe would be fair, um, and I know that those, it's still going to impact these towns. Um, these cities, it's. So, so I'm, I'm very careful in how we go about that, I have not approached them, I think we need a collective. Um, approach to, to bringing this up, if. The outright appearance of it is gonna be as like it was an extra cost or tax, when really it's a requirement through code.
Well, that's what they're gonna have to understand, it is a requirement to the code and because of that fact, uh. I mean, obviously, not obviously, but sometimes they don't want you there, you know?
Yeah, um. Well, the, the bottom line is, they, they do wanna say.
When they want you, they want you.
Yeah, and, um. Now. It, it's just a matter of really the equity, equity of it, and I think it's brought up fast and I put in, I put in my presentation. Um, as we approached Miles with contract services. And we can't, we can't mistake what Miles is doing for what I'm attempting to do with the other. The other cities, Miles could come back and go, we wanna, we wanna stop our contractor, we wanna go back with. With Preston, they could do whatever they want that way, um, but press, uh, Miles' question at their board meeting was. What does Andrew pay as I'm bringing them into our contract? You know, they're aware of this, everybody's aware of it, but it's, it's, uh, it's flying low under the radar. And I, I don't think it's popular, I don't think it's a good political move or anything like that, but I think it's a necessary move.
And, well then, what, where do we come up with the manpower?
Okay, now, the, the manpower in terms of what I'm, what I'm suggest, gonna, going to suggest. Isn't additional contract. It's, it's that, it's those intergovernment agreements and it's gonna be services that they're already getting. And, um, it, can, can I violate the Friday rule and hand out hours?
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna be the first one to violate that.
I knew and I had you pegged.
Yeah, that's a format I'm really familiar with, if, if I tried to do this in my rural town meetings, it'd be like, no, you keep that on your side, that comes in the week before. So I'm, I'm familiar with that, that's more than fair, um. Now, directed patrol is different than contract, directed patrol is. Um, we're, we're, we're patrolling within, within Jackson County. But within that specific city, we let dispatch know, I'm directed patrol in, in the city of Andrew.
Is this documented?
It is, this is all through dispatch.
Alright.
Um, yeah, that, that's our, that's, that's the importance of doing this and documenting it through dispatch. Um, because it does timestamp it, i- it shows where the officer is even to the point that you could. Uh, you, you, you could look on a computer tracking program, PPS wise and see where they are, so, um. And then it demonstrates how long you're there. They may be running traffic, you know, along highway sixty-two right there in Andrew or wherever it may be, but they're in that area, they're in that. City and they're. They're patrolling, now, it's different than contract to where Miles is asking for ten hours a week. Um, and, and, and we have a deputy outside of their normal work hour contracted to provide that service. So we're not adding people, now, it does, it does affect manpower in our staffing. And we do have to be staffed properly to, to allow people to be in different areas. Um, you know, a lot of the staffing, you can look at it as per capita, you know, we have twenty thousand citizens. But you really have to look at call volume and you have to look at our, our geography there, it's a big county, and so. Um, some, sometimes statistics don't just work great per capita. But, so we are providing these services, we would continue to demonstrate that. And then we respond to calls for service within these, within these cities also. So that's just the person on duty, that is not any extra manpower, that's compensation for services.
This, this might be a dumb question, or, are you like, your deputies are law enforcement, are they limited or regulated? Of how many hours they can work per week or per sixty hours like a truck driver?
No, they're not.
They're not.
And, you know, in terms of.
Yeah, say that for safety reasons or whatever.
Yeah, no, in terms of that, that goes into policy and procedure, we do have policy and procedure that, um, limits what they can work. For other people, um, and, and we could deny, you know, if they have. Too much employment going on and it's affecting their work, we have policy and procedure to fall back on to control that. But, yeah, um, you, you. Obviously, when you start looking at nine, ten, twelve-hour shifts, you, you can see an extra duty, the, um. The governor's safety, uh, traffic grant, which we have more of this year. We, we have to look at that and then we have that block of hours that's extra that they're getting paid time and a half for. But yeah, you could, you can get into where guys are working sixteen-hour shifts and it's not healthy.
Right, and I look at it and I don't know what their schedule was made up, but, you know, are they, are they thirty-five this week and forty-seven next week? I don't know, forty-five, I just don't know.
So, so I, I, I put that, I broke this down, obviously, I put, I put in existing budgets. Just to demonstrate policing's expensive, it, it's an expensive sport. Um, I used some formulas that other counties were using, one being Cedar County's charging ninety-eight dollars. Per capita for services, generally, they do dedicate with that ninety-eight. They will dedicate somebody to that area, that's something we're not capable of. Um, the cost for contract is seventy-five dollars an hour is gonna be prohibitive, prohibitive. To, to these cities in terms of how they can, you know, afford services by contract, like Miles is. Um, we don't have the manpower, I doubt they have the budget to, to, to really contract at seventy-five dollars an hour. I took historical numbers, I took some lows of others of counties. That do ten dollars per capita for what they call drive-through services, real similar to what we're calling directed patrol. Hey, when we're up in St. Enatus, we'll make a few laps and call it good. At ten dollars an hour, I think when you break that down to what we're providing directed patrol, they're getting greater than that. And the twenty-five dollars per capita really becomes something. Consistent historically with what Andrew and Springbrook did, I, I can't get the Lamont numbers, they're. They're Lamont saying they don't have the numbers, um. There's historical reference that we had people, you know, providing Lamont, I don't have those numbers. So I, I broke this down to the twenty-five and that's where I got the projection of per capita. Um, of, by example, Andrew at ninety-five-hundred. Now. Um, and then the historical aspect of that. Now, in, in, if, if we would choose to go forward with this, um. I, I think it does have to. Really a lot for where they are in their budget process, partly how we collectively talk to them. About this, cause I don't think this should show up as a bill. This is a conversation and, uh, and then they have to prepare for that. And, um, you know, and I'm sure they're gonna have some counter numbers to that and, and wanna see what pain for their buck they're getting. So, uh, this is a process, I, again, I. It's necessary.
Whether it's a public hearing to bring them all in, if you could talk about it. Only one spot, or do you wanna go out to each individual community and talk in the meeting?
My guess is that you're gonna wanna go to each community, cause otherwise you've got five council members from each town and you're gonna have forty people.
Send a designated representative, whether it be a city clerk or a. Mayor or council member, whoever.
Yeah, but it's tough for. Or I think that person to pass on what Jim was relaying here also, I, I, I don't know how you feel about that, it's not going to.
And, and no, I, I think that's exactly why I'm bringing this forward, I think we have to decide how we wanna go forward with it. Um, I would be more than happy to, to take the lead individually. Uh, or collectively, if we wanted to try to get everybody at the same table.
Well, I think it's, uh, whatever we do, we need to proceed because again, they're working on budgets right now and by the next six months or five months, they're gonna have to be done.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean. If you're willing to go to each city council.
Mm-hmm.
Or whatever you, recommendation would be, I don't, I'm not opposed to having a large public meeting or public hearing. Wouldn't be a public hearing, well.
Well, my, my proposal would be that I would, um, contact them all prior to December. And try to, try to get this out there, get the feedback. Um, I, I would suggest that, um, to myself as well, that. This isn't, uh, this isn't that hard sell of pushing numbers back and forth, this is first of all, understanding, um. You know, the, the philosophy and the code behind it.
So, it might be a simple thing to us to get the clerks emails and maybe put a plant a seat here before you go see them and say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna, we need to. So it might be a simple thing too, is to get the clerks emails and maybe put a plant a seat here before you go see them and say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna, we need to discuss this.
Yeah.
Looking over it.
Yeah.
You gotta be careful. I look at the coconut display and what's either counting. Proposal, I mean, you might.
Um, yeah, yeah, and, and, uh, and I think we have, um, you know, dispatch worked into that and some other things too. Um, the bottom line is, you know, the city spend a lot on law enforcement and, and. You know, we're competing nationally for, for officers and.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to be.
You know, that's right.
Committed to providing. Services, but yeah, it's.
No, do you, are you looking for us to say whether you wanna do the twenty five dollars an hour or?
I, I would ask.
Capital?
Yeah, I, I, I would just like some agreement that those numbers are.
What do you think is the most fair for you and the cities? What would be your recommendation?
Yeah, I like the twenty five per capita. I, I think that's, that brings everything into relation. Again.
Are you gonna be arguing every year over what per capita is?
I, I think they will be. Yeah, I think that's gonna have to be, that's gonna have to be reflected of, you know, census and, and we think maybe we could, you know. Bracket it into census years.
Okay.
And every ten years. Unless they have a different method of, of saying how many current residents they have, but.
I just, the, the only thing I see about the.
Is it easier per capita or is it easier per?
Seventy five dollars. It's, yeah, seventy five dollars. Per hour, per month or, you know?
You know, cause that's, so, you know, when you brought this, the first thing I thought of is the communication board that just started re-meeting. And, you know, they're trying to figure out kind of that fee. For all of these small communities too on if you do it per capita, per home, per.
Yeah.
You know?
Um.
I, I guess I would be in favor of either one of those, you know, as far as the capital, the number of hours per, you know?
I guess, cause you guys are gonna be tracking this, whichever you find to be the.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I find the per capita to be easier.
I mean, you look, yeah.
I think when you look at the contract per hour, then I think we get into immediate manpower needs where we, uh. That, that doesn't help us or that might not. And, and it also. It, it wouldn't, and as I told Miles. Um, even though we have contract, we still do direct control there. It's, it's not, we're gonna discount them other than ten hours a week. You know, that, this is, this is a service and when the call comes in for service, we can't, um. We don't go, oh, Zwingles up, you know, out of hours. So.
Rondo's a tough one. I got half of the town into Duke County.
Yeah, it's gonna be, that, that one's, I think, a flyer there on how, how to go about that.
So with Miles, will this be a separate thing or will they take one to the other or whatever they decide?
Miles is contracted with us, so that stays how it is. Unless one of us should. Um, wanna revisit that contract and then we, we would look at it the same way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess you can proceed with, with the fact with them. If you're gonna visit with the mayor in the council meeting, um, that. You know, that's kinda your recommendation and we kinda follow and. You know, supporting you on that process. And I mean, if they've got different input to it, then we certainly listen to.
Okay.
Compromise if it will be. Yeah, I mean, you, it's just. There's a lot of information here.
Yeah, and, and I did, I did get with, with attorney, um, keys. And, and, um. He's got a copy of this and, you, you know, he's aware and understands the soundness of code and the reason for it and. Um, obviously there would be, uh, new twenty E's which we need. We have. A lot of twenty E's that are signed by people no longer with us. And, and, um, I think that, that should be fresh ink, so.
Okay. Um, if you wanna do the per capita, uh, I will support you on that.
Okay.
If, when you start going to meetings, if you want somebody to tag along.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll let you all know what, what's lined up, when and where, and we will proceed.
What's your starting date?
If, um.
Can you try to get this done by July first?
I, I would, well, I would like to have everybody contacted by, um, end of December. And I'd like, uh, this to be a twenty four. Uh, I would like to put this number in the twenty four budget, but I can't, so. And should I show up hard and feather? Do you know how the conversations went?
Yeah.
So good.
You drag you behind a horse or something. Okay, well, I appreciate the info, Jim, and, uh, yeah, let us know or keep us informed or, um, and we'll try to help you out.
Okay, perfect.
Assist if you need it.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
All right, thanks. All right, so. Next on our agenda is Jeremy Oden from Midwest Construction Consultants with an update on. Uh, extension building in our jail facility.
It looks not a very nice day out there. I can tell you that. I was on a skid loader for about an hour this morning.
You ain't got a cab now?
No. So.
You know.
Uh, yeah, down the fairgrounds, they're setting the remaining three units this morning on top of the. The, the, through up there, the R T U's and that, so had to get some. Ground flattened out for that, so, um, that's looking good. Uh. The epoxy in the kitchen and the bathrooms on the walls is coming along good. Um, paint is nearing completion down there. Um, got rolling storage going in next Monday. Um.
Now, you're talking.
I'm talking about the fairgrounds.
Okay.
Right now. Um, so, yeah, everything's moving along nicely down there.
So what's the projection as far as heat in that building or something, I should say?
Uh, well, uh, the plumbers are gonna be back out, uh. Actually, I've gotta talk to Shane from hometown, so they're setting those units today. They may be out yet this week to finish that up and get that on, so. I would say we should have some heat in there by next week.
Okay, I mean, next week looks a little better, of course. I'm just concerned about some of the interior work that's being done that.
It's actually really warm in there and I've got a couple of space heaters that we purchased for, uh, temporary heat in the admin at the jail. And I haven't even had to run them yet out there, so. I can take one down there and burn that for a while too if we need to, so not too concerned with that, so. Um, on the jail, uh, the detention doors, door to door frames. Uh, showed up for the mezzanines, so masons are coming back Monday to start on walls in the upstairs and everything. So, um, that's good. All the detention ceilings also showed up. So I wanna get, uh, those guys back down, get some of those put up in the, uh. Holding cell areas first and then when the walls go up in the mezzanine and they'll move right into that, so. I had stronghold the detention contractor down last week and hung all the door slabs that we could. They hung all the cells, all the dabs, all the exterior doors, so we're a hundred percent closed in now with. Actual doors, well, save for front and back, uh. I've still got temporary doors on those, but they're locked, we're locked and everything, so. Um, the remaining rooftop units will go up next week on the jail. Uh, we've been waiting on the concrete to cure out a little bit. I didn't wanna put a crane on fresh concrete. I wanted to wait fourteen days on that, so. Uh, next Tuesday, they're scheduled to come out, do that. And I've got plumbers gas piping, actually right now. Don't imagine they're having too much fun up there on the roof today, but, uh. So Mason Kraus is working on that and, uh. So yeah, as soon as we can get, uh, the, uh. Rooftop units up, get the gas pipe run to them, um, Doug's gotta get some electricity to them. And, uh, then we'll get them fired up and then we'll have permanent heat in the building. I'd say. Probably the week after next, the only time it's all said and done, you know?
Yeah, it looks pretty good. I mean, the forecast looks a little better than.
Yeah, it's supposed to warm back up, so, yeah, next week looks all pretty good, I think.
I mean, you get a little sun, it warms up pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that concrete holds the heat anyway, them sidewalks.
Even in the correctional right now, as we speak, I mean, the temperature's going down in there, but it's not that bad. I mean, it's, it's probably fifty degrees in there. You know, I got guys in there working, so.
If they're doing something, they, that don't bother them.
Yeah, yeah, it's not terrible, so.
I see, was I, did I see they're making cuts on the sidewalks for those downspouts or?
Yeah, yeah, they got those cut. They gotta hammer them out yet, but yeah, they cut those the other day. I had them out. Or, uh, housekeeping pads for, uh, water softener and, uh, water heaters and, and. And then they had to fill the bollards full of concrete, so they went ahead and cut them Friday, so. Yep, I'll get some, uh, plate steel, uh, made probably from Sean Girardi and, uh. Get those covered up, looking better, so. Um, yeah, as you, everyone knows, concrete's all done and everything out there, so, yeah.
But you know, you don't know exactly how it's gonna look until you see it and.
Yeah, yeah.
The drainage looks good.
Drains well and, yeah, I was happy with it, so. Yeah.
And the, and it's all washed, the building's all washed and completed?
Yep, it's washed and sealed. So, yeah, the outside work was pretty well done. They got a couple of windows they got a cock yet that they masked and stuff.
When does the? The, the rear and main door go in and?
Um. So. I don't have the frames in, on that, that front is actually, uh, aluminum storefront. And that's skis molding glass is taking care of that and they, they don't have that constructed yet. I don't have an exact time on that gone, but. Should be here before too long, you know, so.
The back door is a?
The back door. The only reason we didn't hang that the other day when my detention guys were down is because Bruce Builders didn't have that door frame grounded. And I didn't wanna hang it on a frame that wasn't grounded, cause it weighed about three hundred pounds. And if you tweak that frame, you know, it, it's just not good, you know? So that's the only reason we didn't get that one on, but, uh. Yeah, I'm gonna get them back down here before too long. Like I said, get going on some of those ceilings and stuff like that, so plumbing's coming along nicely. Uh, they're doing a good job. Uh, the tenors are hard at it. They got a long ways to go. They got a lot of duct to hang up, but you know, they're, they're there, they're working, so. You know, I'm pleased with their progress. It's just gonna take some time, so.
Well, it all sounds pretty positive then, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're good about it, so. Yeah, awesome, and, uh. I don't know what, did, uh, you find out anymore about the solar guys when they're coming or? Makes no difference to me. I was just curious. I didn't know.
I guess we didn't know exactly when they're coming. I know they got things ordered. They thought, actually thought it could probably maybe even bore them post yet there. We wouldn't have to buy them another special. What are you talking about, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
I was just curious, so, okay. Shouldn't really be anything standing in their way.
Yeah, when we were talking.
Well, you know, it's gonna be a nice, nice that it's not on the roof.
I would, I didn't want it on the, I, I don't like that idea.
When we were there talking, they said that it'd take about a week or so to get the stuff in and if they got it ordered, it just depends on when. Later this week, maybe next week, if everything goes good, that.
Catch a decent window in the weather and everything, so.
Next week looks pretty nice.
Yeah, who knows this time of year, it could do anything, you know?
You do have direct contact with the solar guy, right?
I, I do. I, I don't know what they need from me or anything. And I, I told him, just, you know, whatever you need, call me, you know, I, I don't. Profess to know anything at all about it, but you know, whatever.
Well, just so we coordinate a little bit, we still got some, is there some finish up CD yet? So after they wash the building, so that they kinda coordinate that they don't.
Yeah, the only thing that's holding me up from getting Josh Echo back out is that. Right out there out front where the transformer and stuff is, there's a huge mess out there. And the fact is, the masons have got to have somewhere to mix. I don't wanna mix it on the concrete. They're, they're, they're sloths. By, by trade, uh, uh, nothing against those guys, but they just are, you know? Yeah, it's a messy job and I, they gotta have someplace to make a mess and so I, I left that. So I can't really get John back out as much as I would like to, to do this little bit and then come back out again to do this final little bit, you know, it's gonna kinda. Have to wait till it's all.
Sure.
Which I, at this point, I don't know if, uh, it'll happen this fall or maybe spring.
So is Cockey done leveling the dirt out and stuff where the, since the?
No, he's got, so out there by where the soul is going, you know, there's a pile of dirt out there. And I gotta get ahold of Steve and see when he's gonna come and take care of that and then. Level out, we need to do it here pretty quick. Actually, I need to call Steve today. Um, out there where I'm gonna set the masons up. That's a huge mess up there too, so we gotta get skid loader in there. Get some of that cleaned up, so I'll give Steve a call and see what's on his schedule, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Know how to get ahold of us.
Sounds great, Mike. All right, thanks a lot. Guys, have a great day.
Yeah, Jim, you got any questions?
We switched gears.
No, I think we're good.
I got some wordable ones and that.
Oh, so you didn't do the tech?
John wasn't letting me. Tell me to take care of something, I do it, then I get Mike. Yeah, no, we're. No, I think we're good. And then what I'm gonna do. Hopefully, like I was saying, with, you know, get these other rooftop units set, get this gas pipe and everything, so hopefully in a week or two we'll have some. Real heat available.
You need something else, I'll, you know?
Okay, sounds good, Lisa. Thank you.
You're next, Jeremy.
Yep, guys, have a great day.
Yep, thanks.
Stay warm. Okay. Um. We just have a whip that's, is that correct? So anything else before the board this morning?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?